Good evening. I'd like to convene this meeting of the city council at 6:18. First item on the agenda is the agenda. Councilor Nodelle.
President Wright, did you want to salute the flag?
Uh, Councilor Nodelle, we're going to salute the flag.
Okay, great.
Would you please join with me in saluting the flag?
Congratulations to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Councilor Nodelle.
President Wright, I move that we amend and adopt our agenda as follows. First to note, the final version of consent agenda item 5.06, Investment Policy Statement per CIO Anderson. Note writ material for consent agenda item 5.07 per DFO Goodwin and City Attorney's Office. Note revised version of consent agenda item 5.11, Resolution, Authorization, Reimbursement of Waterfront Tiff District and Downtown Tiff District FY18 Related Costs, Board of Finance per City Attorney's Office. Add to the consent agenda item 5.12, Communication from Stephanie Reed, Acting HR Director and Beth Anderson, CIO, Re-recommendation/Step placement Olivia Darice, Public Works Engineer, Department of Public Works, the motion to waive it, accept it, and place it on file. Note updated presentation slides for agenda item 6.01 per Nathan Lavery. Note final version of agenda item 6.03, A Resolution on Non-Union Salary Increases and Adjustments to Health and Retirement Benefit Contributions for FY19, Board of Finance. Note Mayor's Communication Regarding Agenda Item 6.03 per CIO Anderson. Note writ material for Agenda Item 6.05, Resolution, Ratification of Tentative Agreement and Authorization to Execute Collective Bargaining Agreement Between the City of Burlington and the Burlington Police Officers Association, July 1, 18 to June 30, 2022, Board of Finance per City Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Councilor Nodelle. Seconded by Councilor Busher, any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have our agenda. Item number two is Communication from Eileen Blackwood regarding expected executive session regarding Burlington Telecom. City Attorney Blackwood.
Yes, we were proposing this be an executive session because what I'd like to do is update you on matters related to the ongoing litigation before the Public Utility Commission and negotiations related to that, the sale of Burlington Telecom.
And that encompasses a fairly wide range of topics?
It does, and I believe that premature disclosure would put the city at a disadvantage.
Okay, and who will stay for this?
And who will stay for that is the Mayor's Office, the CIO, because there's a portion here involving the community investment commitment that he's been involved in, the CIO, the Mayor, and myself.
All right. Councilor Mason?
Thank you, President Wright. I'd like to make a motion for a specific finding that premature public knowledge would clearly place the public at a substantial advantage involving litigation over Burlington Telecom.
Thank you, Councilor Mason, and seconded by Councilor Nodelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye in terms of the findings.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have the findings. Councilor Mason?
Thank you, President Wright. Based on the finding of fact, I'd make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Roof, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We move into executive session. Councilors, please take their seats. We are going to reconvene the city council meeting at 7:02. And the next item on the agenda is a presentation from Megan Tuttle, our comprehensive planner, regarding Plan BTV, and also have, I still always want to say, former counselor and former council president Andy Montral, even though I know you're planning commissioner now, but it's still hard for me to, as well as Director David White.
Not within the past.
I'll start this off very briefly. First, it's a pleasure to be here again. I'm here also with Harris Roan, who's another member of our planning commission. So we're here to present our Plan BTV. It's a project that the Planning Commission has been working on for quite a while now, for several months now. It's been headed up very much by Megan, who has really spearheaded this. At our last Planning Commission meeting, we voted on this unanimously to forward it on to the full council. This is basically the city's comprehensive plan that we have to work on about every five years. Our current plan is coming due, and this needs to be re-adopted or newly adopted as our new plan. Megan will fill in a lot of the details in this in just a moment. But we've taken a whole new approach this year. Rather than the same very textual plan that's been put together that gets put on a shelf that's hard to read, hard to understand, hard to figure out what the vision is for the city, we've done it in a much more presentable way, a much more understandable way, that really focuses on what's the city's vision and how do we get there, and incorporates a lot of our different plans that we've put together over the years. And really, this has taken a whole new approach on how to do it, and I'll let Megan present it, but we're just, and the Planning Commission, super, super excited about the way this has all come together. So, to hear from Megan now.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for having us. I see many of you flipping through the document at your desk. This is the second draft of Plan BTV that Andy was talking about. This is the version of the document that incorporates changes based on the public input that we've received over the fall that the Planning Commission approved for us to forward to you. So we're excited to be here to present it to you tonight. I'm going to give you just a really high-level overview of what you can expect to find in that document as you dig into it over the next few months, and ultimately, we're here to ask you to kick off the process of having a conversation about this plan at the council level. We are going to be doing some additional public engagement over the next few months, but ultimately, we're here to ask you if you would consider scheduling a public hearing to be held at one of your meetings in mid-February so that we can really start to invite the public in to have a conversation about this plan. Can you advance the slides? I'm not sure why this isn't working. So, tonight, we wanted to start by talking to you a little bit about what's in the plan, but also a little bit more about what Andy was saying about how we got here. This plan is really a continuation of the work that we've been doing on comprehensive planning in the city since the 1970s. As many of you know, the Municipal Development Plan is a document that we've updated every five years and really continued to evolve and iterate the city's vision for land use and development over those years. This update is our next iteration of that plan, is our update to the 2014 Municipal Development Plan. We kicked this process off in the early part of the year by evaluating the current plan, looking at what was in it, what had been done, what hadn't, as well as what our statutory requirements were for the plan, and what we as a department and planning commission wanted to achieve with the update. And we're really excited with what we've been able to put together so far. As we started with that work, we then went out to the public to talk to them about what are the important issues that we make sure are incorporated in this update. This was a bit of a difficult process because we weren't creating a new plan from scratch. This is something that we've been working on for a very long time, so it was a hard thing for many people to wrap their heads around. So we took the approach of trying to have a lot of informal conversations with residents, workshops and NPAs, of course, but really trying to go out into the community and have one-on-one, you know, small group conversations with people about issues that are important to them in the city of Burlington, in their neighborhoods, that we could make sure that we included. So we included a really broad range of conversations, including things like talking to high school students as part of their program days, or attending adult English language classes that were put on in the Old North End Community Center, even going out and talking with staffs of some of the nonprofit organizations to get a better sense of what the constituents that they serve are dealing with and are really concerned about. So all of that work that we did, if you could go to the next slide, Amy, oops, all of that work that we did then informed the draft that the Planning Commission began putting together in the late summer and early fall. This also was a little bit of a different approach for us. We took a much more iterative approach to putting that draft together, bringing individual elements of the draft to the Planning Commission for conversation as we were preparing them instead of waiting until we had a sort of final draft put together to bring to them at the very end. I think this really benefited our conversations and allowed us to adapt and respond to things that we were hearing from the community throughout that process. Ultimately, we worked through that draft until early November, when we published it for the public to take a look at and to provide comment on, and the Planning Commission's process culminated in a public hearing in early December, which for us was also a bit of a new endeavor. We were able to work closely with our colleagues in SITO to put together a public hearing process for that meeting that was much more engaging, that really gave residents the opportunity to sit down with the planning commissioners and with each other to have a conversation about the goals of the plan, rather than just kind of standing up and giving us a few short statements under the mic, at the mic. So we're excited to have incorporated a lot of the work that the Planning Commission has done over the past almost year, as well as the comments that we've heard from the public throughout this period of time, into the draft that we presented to you tonight. Tonight is the start of our process with you. We are hoping, as I said earlier, that we can warrant a public hearing, but I wanted to let you know some of the things that we will also continue to be doing during this time. We started, as I mentioned, at our public hearing, we started a really great conversation with residents about the goals of the plan, and we anticipate having a number of additional sessions to really dig in deep to the actions that support those goals and some of the land use elements, to give us an opportunity to have that more in-depth conversation with the community about those elements of the plan in the coming weeks, as well as doing some additional work to get the word out about the fact that the plan, another draft of the plan, is in fact available for comment. We hope to take all of the input over those next several weeks and months and bring them to you as part of your consideration at the public hearing, and then ultimately use that to inform a third and final draft of this updated plan, which we would ask for you to hold a public hearing on in the middle of March, ultimately working towards a deadline to re-adopt the plan by the end of March. So what can you expect to find in the document? I want to touch back really briefly on some of the objectives that guided the work that the Planning Commission did. When we came back to share this with you in April of this year, we shared that we had some pretty lofty goals about how the plan was organized, how the content was presented in the plan. Ultimately, we wanted to move away from a plan structure that was organized by our statutory requirements and to one that was more meaningful to the issues that we hear from residents as being most important about the future of Burlington. We also wanted to clarify the relationship of this document to other Plan BTV documents and other plans that are adopted by the city, and also make the plan much more accessible in all ways that you can imagine, more readable, easier to find, more interesting and engaging. Plan BTV addresses this broad range of topics that are all related to how we ultimately use land in the city of Burlington, and in the past, the plan had been organized into individual chapters around each of these issues. While it was very informative in terms of what it meant for Burlington's future, at times, it was very repetitive, because as you can imagine, what might be a housing goal is also an economic development goal, also may be a historic preservation goal. So the new plan is organized around a framework that better demonstrates the interrelated nature of each of these issues and speaks to that future vision of the city of Burlington. The meat of the plan, the policies and goals that are contained in the plan, are found in two sections, two major sections of the plan. The first is called "Our Plan for Action," and this is where all of the goals and actions of the plan are presented. They are organized into four themes: distinctive, dynamic, inclusive, and connected, which we can consider to be characteristics of Burlington according to our future vision. There is a chapter on each of these characteristics that talks about what it means for Burlington to be, for example, a distinctive city in the future, what types of issues are related to Burlington being a distinctive community, and then outlines reasons why this is important and what we are going to do to ensure that we will continue to foster that identity in the future. Our future land use has also had a little bit of a facelift. This section of the plan is now organized again into a way that is much simpler and easier to understand, but it's still based in the long-term policies that have guided land use and development in the city for a long time. The principles of protecting our most sensitive natural and cultural resources, of sustaining really diverse and strong neighborhoods, and identifying areas of the city that we can accommodate future growth through infill redevelopment, through better utilizing those parts of our city that are already developed. So you can see through the framework in which the land use plan is presented, we talk about each of those principles, areas of the city we're planning to conserve, that we're planning to sustain, and areas where we can accommodate growth. One of the difficult things about Plan BTV is that it's both a really high-level roadmap, it's a 20-year vision for the entire city of Burlington, but it also incorporates a lot of detailed work that we as a community, the city, the council, have done over that time to consider what these issues mean in certain neighborhoods or for certain systems of the city. So one of our goals was to use our land use plan to make those connections to those plans much more explicit. For example, when you look at a section of the plan that talks about the areas of the city that we're planning to conserve, you'll see that high-level vision. What is the importance of these parts of the city, and what are some of the things that we need to consider about their future? But in other parts of the plan, we also dive in to what are some of the details. For example, when we talk about what it means for us to plan for growth in the downtown and waterfront core, we make an explicit connection to the downtown and waterfront master plan and some of the goals and policies that are contained within it, as well as almost a half a dozen other plans that give us very detailed, specific direction about the downtown in the future. So we hope that through this framework, it'll be much more obvious how all of the plans and studies that we've adopted as a community are related to one another and actually become part of Plan BTV. On that note, a few last things that I just want to make sure you're aware of as you start to dig into the plan, is that there are a number of plans that are proposed to be adopted and incorporated by their reference in this plan update that will be incorporated in the plan for the first time. You might remember in the past, we've updated the Municipal Development Plan to adopt the downtown waterfront master plan into it, for example. This is a list of plans that have been created since the last time we updated Plan BTV that we want to make sure are explicitly incorporated in the plan by their reference, and this does include the Plan BTV South End Master Plan, which is something that we've talked about adopting through its incorporation in this plan update. And then finally, this plan is something that we hope will be a dynamic plan going forward. What we are trying to do with this update is move out of a plan that is a really exhaustive list of the history of certain issues in Burlington or a really deep data dump, and move some of those elements into an online platform where they're easier for us to keep up to date in a more frequent way, and so that we can use those elements to better tell the story of what our plan is trying to achieve. So in the back of your plan, you'll see some notes about sections of the plan that we are asking for your consideration for adoption as a static document, really all of the goals and policies and the land use framework, and things that we are asking for you to consider as dynamic elements that aren't adopted, so that we can use those and update them over time. I think that's it. We look forward to talking with you over the next few months about this plan and answering your questions as you're able to dig into the content and take a look at it.
Thank you. And the next step in this process will be that we need to hold a public hearing in February?
Correct.
Okay. Let's open it up to the council. Councilor Shannon?
Thank you. Megan, thank you for always having such clear presentations. Your presentation at the NPA was excellent, and I always appreciate how you can take something so complex and bring it down to something that's digestible. But I didn't understand that last thing you said about not adopting the dynamic part of the document, and if you could clarify, like, what is the dynamic part, and how do we not adopt part of it and adopt the other part?
That's a really great question, and this was a really fun thing to mull over with the City Attorney's Office. When I say dynamic, I should be clear, I don't mean the dynamic theme that's in the document. In the document, you'll find a chapter called Burlington Today, which presents some stats about the city, some data about land use, some data about population and housing. You'll also see some references to things like other plans and studies that inform the document but aren't actually ones that we want to be adopted. So, something like, you know, the entire bookshelf of previous municipal development plans. We want to be a reference document, but we don't necessarily want them to be adopted as part of this plan. The reason for that is just so that we can update these things. Land use changes a lot, and we want to be able to keep our maps and data up to date as they change, not wait eight years down the road to update them again. So there is actually a page in the appendix that very clearly spells out which pages of the document we are asking to have adopted and which ones we would consider to be the dynamic content.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Shannon. Councilor Busher?
Thank you. This format is very different. You're absolutely right, and so I need to look at it because I haven't. I do have a couple of questions, though. The timeline that you proposed, so I was wondering how hard and fast March was for adoption. The reason I'm saying that is that there are some in the community that get really wrapped up with the election process and the charter changes, and there are a number, and so people will be focused on Town Meeting Day, and that's at the beginning of March, and for those who maybe don't have all the time in the world, like all of us, I'm concerned that then, on the heels of Election Day, the expectation is on March 11th to have the second public hearing and then adoption on the 25th of March. So I just wondered if indeed, if it was possible, and I don't know whether the public would want that or not, to wait until April to adopt the plan? I'm just trying to be considerate of the people who may want to weigh in, who may find themselves not having that time prior to Town Meeting Day.
Yeah, I certainly understand the concern. The plan, the current plan, the 2014 Municipal Development Plan, actually expires on March 30th or 31st of this year.
Oh, okay.
So the goal is to have the plan re-adopted before that time.
I see.
Because there are a number of things like our zoning ordinance and our impact fees that are tied to having a plan adopted.
Okay, okay. All right, so I understand that. I just, I, we are criticized by the public a fair amount for not giving them enough lead time to give comment, and I know you've shown your involvement, and I know you all do a great job, but I just wanted to just point that out, okay? The second thing is, if I was to look at this plan, if I'm a person in Burlington who's new to Burlington, is there, in this plan, is there a link to the ordinances that tells you, I mean, if you're somebody who's trying to figure out how Burlington develops and what their thoughts are and their comprehensive plan, but also wants to understand how they would then make something happen, is there a link with this to the code of ordinances?
Yes, that's actually one of the documents that is included in that list of dynamic items.
Okay.
We don't want the Burlington Comprehensive Development Ordinance to be adopted as part of this, but we do include a link to it in the document, in several places, actually.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So President Wright stepped away. Is there anyone else that has questions for this? Councilor Jiang?
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here, and I look at this plan and I'm like, wow, great pictures, wonderful pictures, and I'm like, wow, this would be great to maybe put those pictures together, you know, or just in general, Burlington, two great, wonderful pictures, and sell the city by just the great, wonderful pictures. You know, I think that would be amazing, because in most cities and states, you sometimes receive advertisement of those cities, why they're great, and I think having that in Burlington would be amazing, you know, how tourists, why they should come here, because neighborhoods are different and they're beautiful, how do we capture them all? But my question is basically, if you go to the New North End, you can think about there is no land to be built or bring new developments, looks like it's already neighborhood-focused, right? And I was just wondering, what will it take? What are the elements in which you use to determine this area of town needs a plan? And why can't we have a Plan BTV or Plan New North End? And I think I asked this question before, I'm asking it again, and we got criticized, and we received the question, why we don't have Plan BTV New North End? Was just wondering if you can touch on that, please.
Absolutely. So, one of the things that the plan looks at are the different geographic areas of the city, and so the New North End, particularly along North Avenue Corridor, is one of the areas that it focuses on and talks about some of the issues that we've heard residents identify as being really important in that part of the city. And this plan actually does suggest that we should do a plan for that part of the city. It doesn't have a defined timeline, we can work together to determine what that needs to be, but it's something that we have heard as being important, that we need to focus some attention in that part of the city.
If I could just add that not only is this plan a collection of goals and policies about how the city develops over time, but it's also a work plan. For us as a department in planning and zoning, SITO, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, all of the different initiatives that, over the course of the next five to 10 years, or whatever timeframe is identified in the plan, we ought to be taking on these particular issues, these particular topics, to try to answer the questions that are confronting us.
So basically, in 2020, we can start one, or 2019, or like?
So ultimately, in order to take on any initiative, whether it's a Plan BTV North End or something else, we'll need to have a defined scope of work for what it is we're trying to do and have budget allocated as part of the annual budgeting process to be able to undertake that work. So we would be coming back to you with specific elements, particularly for something, an initiative of that scope, to be able to undertake that.
So would you take my comments as we requesting one to have to be in the New North End?
Absolutely.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jiang. Any other councilors with questions for the team? Hearing none?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation, and we will schedule a public hearing for February and move forward with that.
Thank you.
Beginning of the discussion. Thanks. And with that, we will open up the public forum a couple of minutes ahead of time. So let me just start out, let me, actually, before I go to that, just reminding all councilors that you have a sheet in front of you from the Clerk's Office, from Lori Olberg. Please try to fill that out if you can before the meeting and give it to Lori. It is in regard to implicit bias training with Curtis Reed. He has given seven different potential dates, and there's a block of five hours that we will need for that, and I'm guessing it will be something like three to eight or four to nine. So if you can fill that out and give it to Lori tonight, that would be great. With that, all right, with that, I will open the public forum tonight. It's a couple minutes early, 7:28. If anyone does, I only have one person signed up to speak right now. If you would like to speak in public forum, there are sheets over here on the corner table. Please sign up and bring your sheet over to Lori, to the Clerk's Office over here in the corner. But I will open that up with the one person signed up, which is Gene Bergman. Gene, you have the floor. Welcome.
Thank you, President Wright, and nice to see everybody in the council again. I'm here to share my objections to the charter change on the downtown district. While I have fears about the effect on rents, both residential and commercial, that expansion will have, the proposal's privatization of governance is my biggest concerns, and I hope you will vote after the public hearings to take privatizations out of any proposal, and if the time is insufficient to draft an alternative, then to take the entire proposal off of the ballot. I also have drafting concerns and hope that you will use the next 21 days to consider what I believe are serious flaws in the draft. I have detailed my objections in this document, which, well, I will give you after I finish, but I want to highlight some of my concerns. On the question of privatization at the most On the question of privatization at the most simple and basic level, because the purposes of the DID are public purposes and the funds are being raised under the city's taxing authority, I believe they should be performed by an unambiguously public body, not a private entity. Let me go through some other concerns. The revenues from the fees will totally, under the draft, go to the private entity, except for negotiated collection costs to enhance, not replace, city services. This bars the city from using these funds to accomplish any of the purposes that the proposed change gives it the power to do, including the paying for capital improvements and their maintenance. The private entity is given veto power over what constitutes the base level of services that will be provided the city, by the city. I believe that you've created a functional equivalent of a city department, and the entity's workers, as of the functional equivalent of a city department, should be treated with the same rights as other city workers, such as the right to unionize, access to pension plan, fair pay, and benefits. There are five good middle-class city jobs, besides the marketplace directors, that will be lost as city jobs, and it's not likely that they will be replaced by union jobs with the same benefits. This alone makes the privatization a bad idea. Language allows for the privatization of city services in public buildings, parks, and other public spaces, while it appears to be beyond the granted rights, powers, and duties of the entity, since those allow for services for enhancement. If permitted, this further opens the door to the privatization of city services. The proposal does not make the entity, or its committees, or the Board of Abatement, public agencies, because non-public bodies or agencies are not subject to the Open Meeting Law or Public Records Act. The entity and its officials can refuse to provide records or conduct open meetings and still be in compliance with these laws. The proposal's riddled with vague and undefined terms, and you'll see them on several pages that I've done. I've listened to the arguments that supporters made when you discussed this on December 17th. Thanks, this is Channel 17. I don't find the arguments in support of, can I?
You can finish your statement.
Thank you. I do not find the arguments in support of privatization compelling, and I've tried to explain in my document why. I hope you take my concerns seriously and reconsider your support for this ballot item as written. I have found in the public hearing that I attended on November 29th, there was little to no support for privatization of the governance of that district, and I find no, little or no need to privatize these functions. You've cobbled together a very complicated private entity to undertake public functions, and I'll cut to the chase and just reiterate. I hope you take the time now, and I know you don't have any meetings scheduled for the Charter Change Committee, but I hope that you take the concerns seriously, use the time between now and the public hearings, and then act after the public hearings. I have.
All right.
There it is. Here's three for the administration and 12 for the rest of the law.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. The next person, we now have another person, Mark Hughes is up next. Good evening, and welcome, Mr. Hughes.
Your name tags are really small, so I'm trying to lean forward. Oh, okay. Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor, how are you? Thank you for accepting my meeting on the 22nd. Look forward to it.
And Mr. Hughes, you need to pull the microphone right close to you so we can hear. So Channel 17 picks it up as well.
For the record, I'm Mark Hughes. I'm the Executive Director of Justice for All, a racial justice organization. I just relocated to Burlington, so Sharon and Richard, those are my calls that are coming into you. I came to speak to you today about police oversight, just a little bit about police oversight. I don't have the full story on exactly where it is that you're going with it, but I did notice that tonight you will be deliberating on the ratification of the union contract, which was, I think, agreed to by law enforcement on Friday, if I'm not mistaken, last week. And it caused me to begin to think about the major implications of police contracts on law enforcement and their interaction with community, particularly as it pertains with alleged misconduct, and in most cases with impunity. So I just wanted to share with you briefly. I'm pleased to see that the contract is up for ratification. It does leave the door open. If you are talking about police oversight right now, it does leave the door open to ensure that there's some enhanced oversight and accountability for law enforcement here. Now, I just want to pause just for a second and say that this is not an indictment on the credibility or the performance of the current law enforcement in place. I happen to have a pretty good relationship with Brandon, and I think he probably leads the state in many ways. So I just want to make that clear, even though I sat before you and urged you not to bring him in two or three years ago, okay? But understanding what I'm talking about here, it also, it requires an enormous understanding on how law enforcement contracts interact with the community. So what we have here is just a couple of quick details, and then I'll move along. In April 2016, the Chicago Police Accountability Task Force convened, and Mayor Rami Manuel, for those of you who remember him, in the wake of McDonald's death, issued a scathing report that pointed to police union contracts as one of the major barriers to meaningful accountability. In fact, a review conducted by, it was actually called The Times, These Times, rather, there were 17 past and ongoing attempts to implement consent decrees. It showed that when unions believe changes encroach on their contract protections, they often fight back. So you see examples of this in Newark, in Albuquerque, Seattle, Portland, Virgin Islands, Los Angeles, as well as Pittsburgh. In these cities, and I will, I will finish up, I'm almost there. In these cities, police contract protections appear to have weakened or stalled efforts to improve handling of police misconduct. And in fact, just a little tidbit for you, after hackers actually obtained about 60 police union contracts from the FOP, the Fraternity Order of Police, their website, they discovered in February 2016 and put it in The Guardian, that over a third of those contracts contain provisions allowing for acquiring, or requiring, rather, destruction of civilian complaint records. It's for certain that this challenge, it pits two tenants of progressive politics against one another. One is the efforts to hold police accountable for their misconduct, and the right of collective bargaining is the other one. So there's a balance that has to be fought, that has to be sought there. Just to let you know, Campaign Zero, which is an offshoot of Black Lives Matter, what they were able to do, Chip, was is they, they were, they put together six major points about, you know, where contracts often go awry. And Mr. Chair, if I could just have like 30 more seconds, I'll be done.
I will let you go a little longer, just because you're the last person speaking tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thirty more seconds.
Those, those points were disqualifying misconduct complaints, preventing police officers from being interrogated immediately, giving officers access to information that civilians do not get, requiring cities to pay costs related to police misconduct, preventing information on past misconduct from being admitted, and also limiting disciplinary consequences. So as you can see, these are far-reaching implications that are negotiated in union contracts, okay? So in the absence of any additional time, what I will just say to you is that the community is neither in situations like this, we're not really provided the transparency into this process that we really need, because there is a huge impact on us, okay? And we're placed, and we're left with a, the prospect of, you know, having more harm done to us. So I just wanted to stop by and let you know that we don't see that remedy. The city attorney is definitely standing at the intersection, and it's paradox, the city attorney is relied upon and negotiate these contracts, but also, when things go sideways, also called upon to assist in defending these law enforcement officers. So we need that protection. Please, consider taking this into executive session and having a conversation about the implications prior to making a decision tonight. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chair. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. With that, that will conclude our public forum for this evening, and we will move on to item number five, which is the Consent Agenda. Council Nodelle?
President Wright, I move that we adopt the Consent Agenda and take the actions, adopt it as amended, and take the actions as indicated.
Thank you, Council Nodelle, seconded by Council Busher. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of passing the Consent Agenda as amended and taking the actions indicated, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have passed our Consent Agenda. And now, we will move back to the Deliberative Agenda, which is number six. And with the council's indulgence, if there is no objection, I am going to flip the order and do the 6.02 before the presentation from the School Department, because I believe 6.02 should be a pretty relatively quick item. So that is a resolution on the Champlain Parkway compensation hearing. Council Mason?
Thank you, President Wright. I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading, adopt the resolution, and ask for the floor back after a second.
Moved by Council Mason, seconded by Council Jiang. Council Mason?
Thank you, President Wright. I'd like to take this, Jonathan, if you want to, Jonathan Rose and Christine, Kristen, excuse me. So for the public, Kristen.
Kirsten.
Thank you. I'll get it right the third time. Kristen. Ms. Shapiro, Merriman Shapiro.
So helpful.
For the public's benefit, this is yet another step as we move through the state statutory process in terms of getting to a place of actually starting construction on the Champlain This is the, sort of, the last step. On June 6th of this year, the council approved a necessity order, which found that the public good, security, and convenience required the acquisition of, basically, temporary easements within the city limits needed to complete the Champlain Parkway. That basically related to 12 properties along the proposed Champlain Parkway. Subsequent to the necessity order, the state, who was sort of leading negotiations with the private owners, was able to come to terms with eight of those owners. It's my understanding, there was then a ninth owner. Basically, it was a small redesign to the project that removed the need for an easement from that ninth. We then held a hearing on the 17th to determine the monetary damages, if any, that were to be awarded to the three remaining property owners where temporary easements were required. No one showed up at that hearing, well, there were nominal participation at that hearing. We then, as a council, directed staff to come back and submit to us a proposed order, which is what the resolution is calling for. In summary, the order, there are three parcels, 500 Pine Street, Group Five, which is owned by Group Five Investments LLC. There are a number of temporary construction easements, and the proposed consideration to be paid to them is $300. The second parcel is owned by Dealer.com or DDC Holdings, that's at 444 Pine Street. Again, a number of just temporary easements, the proposed consideration to them is $400. And finally, parcel 628, which is 257 Pine Street, owned by Overlake Park. Again, a number of temporary easements, and the proposed consideration for them is $250. So with that, if there are questions for those who have been far more intimately involved with the process, I'll direct them to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mason. Any comments?
I think if you have questions, John, and I will try and answer them to the best of our abilities.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Hearing none? I guess we are ready for a vote. All those in favor of passing this resolution on the Champlain Parkway and moving this one step further, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And now, we will move back to item number 6.01, which is a presentation from Superintendent Yao Bang and the Chair of the School Board, Claire Wool, and possibly others, on the FY '20 school budget. As well as Nathan Lavery, Director of Finance.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair and council. Once again, we're here to share with you our process around the budget development and to hopefully get some feedback from you to return back to our board. We do, we are deliberating with our board tomorrow night as well, so we look forward to your comments to share with the board as we finalize this year's process. We've got, I know you've seen quite an extensive slide deck, but we will try to expedite to get to some of the meaty pieces that we think that you might be more interested in having conversations with, so, but for public consumptions, we've included the entire package, so it's up there so people can kind of look at it. And people are also welcome to contact us directly through our website or phone our office for any other information around the budget process. So with that, I'm going to turn to my colleague, Senior Director Lavery, to start our presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Whoops, moved the whole table here. So as Yao said, we'll move kind of quickly through some of the earlier slides, but I'll try not to go so fast as to miss some important points, including, I think, to start just the, we like to kind of introduce the budget discussions with, return to our mission statement as a bit of a touchstone to reflect why we are engaged in the whole budget building process to begin with. So if you haven't had an opportunity to look at some of that information, I think it's certainly worthwhile to give you a sense of what we're trying to achieve. In the next slide, we talk about some of the major challenges that we're facing in the budget landscape as we look forward to the fiscal year 2020 budget. And that includes things that are common across numerous school districts in the state and probably municipal government as well, including some of wage and benefits costs, but also the inflationary pressures that we're seeing. And even more so, we're also starting to see the impact of some of the trade policy issues at the federal level, including on things like the costs of IT equipment and that sort of thing. So we are at least aware of those challenges in the landscape, even though they aren't necessarily resulting in direct changes to our, to our budget. The next slide, we summarize the process that we're going through with the ultimate goal of a vote on Town Meeting Day by the community. One of the things that we really invested a lot of time in this year was our public and staff input process, and we'll talk a little bit about that in more detail and in subsequent slides. But as you can see, we kind of led off with that, and then we went through a process of developing revenue and expenditure projections, and obviously, we're working toward being able to provide explicit information on what the tax consequences of the budget that will ultimately be. So on the next slide, we talk about the consultation phase. We had multiple community forums, including forums that targeted some of our New American families, and also a forum that was specifically open and inviting families of students who have disabilities, because we wanted to make sure that some of those voices, which aren't always part of our regular input meetings, had a real opportunity to voice their ideas and thoughts on the budget. We've also had an online tool available, and that continues to be available, as Yao said, if folks want to provide feedback. We summarized the themes for the consultation, and you can see those, there are ideas about making new investments as well as making reductions. In some cases, the themes, yep, there they are, they overlap. We had people suggesting adding certain types of positions or resources, and we also had people suggesting that we should make do with fewer of them. So, you know, it's always a challenge to kind of sort through the comments and identify the themes, but these were the major themes related to both new investments and reductions that we received through the community process. Next slide begins a series of slides related to the process we did internally with staff, ultimately, beginning at the school level, providing input to teachers, or rather, teachers and other staff providing input to, as a school, with their, with their principal, and then their principals taking that information and ultimately rolling it up into discussions at our system leaders meeting, which is on the next slide, where they did some work unpacking the mission statement and, you know, really spending some time thinking about how the budget decisions we make can connect to this mission statement, which you'll see, we come back to that later in the process where we identify priorities. Moving ahead, that's also related to it, we can go one more. A more concrete level, we also built the budget with a series of underlying assumptions here. Nothing here should be particularly surprising, but a couple of things that I'll just highlight. One is our health insurance increase. We get our health insurance through my education health initiative. They set the rates for all school districts and the And the plan that the vast majority of school employees participate in is projected to have or actually will have a rate increase of nearly 12% in premiums. That doesn't mean that our health insurance costs go up by 12%. We have changes in enrollment and that sort of thing, so the net impact wasn't as big for us, thankfully. But still, obviously, there's pressure on health insurance premiums, and that obviously consumes some amount of the, you know, the available funds we have to increase spending. Another major cost increase is in special education, where this isn't all of our special education spending, but it's a particular portion of it. Students who are tuitioned into special education schools such as Baird School. We've had a pretty significant increase in the number and actually the tuition rate at those places, as well as the rate that we're charged when we buy services from, for example, the Howard Center, to come into our schools to help us with our inclusion efforts to keep students in the classroom. The next slide reflects our projected enrollments for the next year. We do have a, you know, a non-trivial increase we're projecting at the high schools. We kind of had a bubble that was at middle school. It's going to start to hit the high school at this point. We have, based on enrollment alone, we have the capacity to serve these students with our kind of existing staff. But as you'll see later in the process, there are a number of ideas that would increase staffing to make more opportunities available. I'll give the School Board Chair Claire Wool a chance to talk a little bit about the board's process of developing its own criteria for how to evaluate ideas related to new budget investments.
Thank you. So the board met a series of times together in October, November.
Chairwoman Wool, you're going to need to pull the microphone in closer.
Thank you. So the board met for a number of budget meetings, and the bulk, the most influential meetings will happen this week, after we hear from you as well, to prioritize based on what the system leaders had put forth. This is a process that has been put together over the last two years, which really do guide us as board members. And so it was clear, based on the system leaders, the principals, and the directors of the district, what their priorities were. And so in doing so--
I'm sorry. We need you to pull that microphone in. We're having trouble hearing you. Pull it right in, please. Thank you.
And in doing so, we also prioritized, based on being elected officials, what our constituents and families attending the public schools' priorities were. And so we listed them here in an outline that is pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Next slide. So Chair Wool referred to the systems leaders' prioritization there, and you can see there is some really good alignment with what the board came up with in terms of their criteria. We're looking for some real coherence. And a couple of things I want to kind of emphasize. One of the major emphasis around our budget strategies around early learning interventions. We know from our research and from our own experience that when we spend dollars at the early ages, it gives us benefits at the higher end. And so our systems leaders had a conversation, said we need to strategically move our budget towards supporting the lower ages. It'll be less interventions at the higher ages. So that's a high piece. The other piece around achievement gap, we've talked about achievement and opportunity gaps in the district. Last couple of years, we've done analysis in terms of collecting the data to really find out, you know, who's in the gap. And we know we have an achievement. This is a national sort of challenge, but we also have it here in Burlington. We want to find strategies to help our staff to close the achievement gap, at the same time, raise the bar. So that means that we're employing strategies to try to bring the students who are performing below up, but at the same time, not neglecting the kids at the top end in terms of trying to give them enrichment and challenge as we move forward. So those are huge pieces. The other one I'll sort of emphasize is around socio-emotional. If you know what's happening in the community in terms of opiates, socio-emotional, mental illness, mental wellness, that impacts in our schools as well, too. And so from the data we've collected, our teachers, our staff, and even from parents in the community have talked about this being a profound effect on teaching and learning. So we're trying to emphasize and focus on those pieces. And the last piece around restorative practices has been a focus for us as a district in terms of employing this approach into everything we do. So we want to continue to subsidize and support that. But everything does align with our strategic goals, and you'll see when we list the budget items are in line with our strategic goals and in line with our mission, vision, and values. And of course, one of the first things that we do with our staff is to ensure that we are in compliance with any state or federal compliance areas or legislations and pieces. So that's what our budget will represent.
So we compiled a list of all of the proposed new investments that came through the process, whether they were, that kind of came up through the staff process, came through our principals, very lightly curated, let's say. That totaled over $5 million. We wanted to be clear, that wasn't a proposal. You're going to see what those ideas are, but we felt it was important to list all those ideas, to allow people to see them, to think about them, and also to group them as they relate to both our strategic plan, kind of our major strategic plan elements of inclusive teaching and learning, equitable climate and culture, and sustainable financing facilities. So they're grouped under those broad categories, but then, as you'll see, they're also further grouped by the priorities that appeared on the previous slide. So you'll see that as we go through. And there's a lot here. We're not going to go through each one, but Yao's going to speak to a few of the highlights on each slide. Again, I just want to emphasize, as we go into this next set, that this is not the final proposal. It's from this proposal or from these lists of ideas that we are narrowing the scope toward a final proposal. And we'll talk a little bit more about that process after we've gone through these slides.
So the previous slide talked about the 5.3 million, and that was sort of a narrowed-down process to get to even that. And I would say that in Burlington, we've had really good support around education, so we're really excited about that. And we also have a good investment from our teaching staff in terms of putting in your time to look at what gets us to the next level. At the same time, we understand that there are financial limitations, and so we have to be strategic around what we are going to invest in. But this, what you're going to see here, represents sort of a called list of pretty much everything from our staff input to our board input and community input, and then identifying the priority areas and putting this list. This is not the final in terms of, because the board already has indicated that they wouldn't be looking at a $5 million increase, but we wanted people to see what was being talked about. And what we're doing is strategically trying to figure out a long-term plan in terms of implementing these things. So not everything will happen this year, but next year, we'll carry some things over for the following year and then also for the third year. So therefore, we can achieve the ultimate goals in these priority areas, at the same time, meet the financial limitations that we have. So if I look at this, you can see one of the clusters around is achievement gap priority. And so there are a number of things around supporting teacher capacity and supporting students, and also meeting special needs and looking at some of our alternative programming like Horizons. And on top, these areas have not been supported in the last several years, and many of our at-promised students fall in those categories, and we thought that we need to start recognizing that they're part of our student body as well, too. And they often don't get the voice from parents or from others in terms of being encouraged. So you can see a list of things there. I'll go on to the next slide. Under the inclusive teaching and learning, we also have a category around early learning priority. We talked about early learning being a priority. One of the areas that we focus on is kindergarten. And kindergarten in terms of their needs and capacity, in terms of supporting those classes, the little ones that start off their schooling with us. And so that's an area that our staff have said that we need to pay attention to. Preschool classrooms, preschool is a challenge in Burlington and many communities, and we want to sustain at least the capacity we have. We'd love to get to the point where we could expand and have parents have that choice, but at minimum, we want to be able to at least sustain what we do currently have. So you can see a number of other areas that support the early learning priority in terms of this particular goal area. Next slide. Socio-emotional, I talked about socio-emotional. We did a survey, some analysis with an institute, a national institute, the last past year, and one of the highest indicators that came out was around socio-emotional in our community. And so that really affects our teaching and learning component. So we wanted to emphasize that in our plan as well. So we're looking at some pro-social skills and pro-social emotional supports through our middle schools, in particular. The middle schools are where, you know, it's sort of the one-two years. The kids are kind of in the middle, so they're not elementary kids, and they're not high school kids, and they need that support to transition into the next level. Okay? Next slide. And then there are a number of things that didn't fall under a specific priority area, but we listed it because we wanted to acknowledge that these were needs that people were expressing coming forward. So it doesn't necessarily mean that these will be on the final docket when the board decides on its final number, but we wanted to let the individuals who took part in the process to acknowledge that, yes, we do recognize this is a need, and we will start to plan for future budgets and how we incorporate these needs into our plannings. Okay? Next slide. The other category that we have is equitable climate and culture. And under the achievement gap, supporting the achievement gap, one of the areas is around how do we work with our parents and communities to support the achievement gap? We already have some existing programming, such as Parent University, which is a really good targeted initiative that speaks to new American families. And we want to, we've, in the past, we've had external funding, and that hasn't been able to be sustained. So now we're looking at how do we keep that in-house and continue to grow that program? It's been very successful, and so we're looking to support that as we move forward. Next slide. So under this category, we also are looking at elementary EL teachers, north-south bus. One of the things that, there's an inequity in terms of access to schools right now, in terms of between north and south, and we have to relegate new students or, you know, sometimes there's a dilemma between talking between siblings having to be separated into schools. But now adding another bus gives us that flexibility to balance the demographics and also to give more choice to our parents as they make decisions around where they like to see their students get their education. Next slide. As we talked about, restorative practice is one of our major priorities, and so we want to sustain training around that and be able to work with our community partners and the police services and other partners in the community that have been supporting us. And the other piece we want to start exploring is displaced and suspended students. We know that loss of instructional time decreases achievement. It doesn't help a student who's not performing well or exhibiting maladaptive behavior to say, now you're going to go home and stay home for a few days and then come back. They just lose time. So we have to look at programming where we can support their learning if they need to be moved from the class periodically. That also supports our general ed in terms of for our teachers. They know that there's support for that student, they can continue the learning, and so it's a sort of a two-pronged benefit there. Okay? Next slide. Under this category, socio-emotional learning. So this is where we really get into some of the special needs that we need, and there's a lot of behavior management situation. One of the things, we do get an influx of special needs in Burlington. I think there's a number of reasons. People move here because there are services in the community, and so those families have children, and those children end up in our schools. And so we need to support them to the level that they'll have achievement as well. Next slide. And then, once again, in this category, there's another grouping that didn't quite make the priority list, but we felt that it was important enough to kind of recognize that we're aware of these items, and they may not be funded this year, but down the road, we'll consider how we incorporate them into our process. Next slide. And then the last category is sustainable financing facilities, and I'll probably have Nate speak to some of this a little bit. This area really talks about some of the facilities pieces and the financial planning. The council has been engaged in around some of our bond stuff, and we do get our bonding through the city. And so in the box below, you'll see the numbers around our bonding. Just so people understand, our base budget without any enhancements includes all of the costs for our bonds. So even if we didn't do any of the enhancements, we would have our bonds for the capital plan for the BHS High School and all the other bonds that we've been fortunate enough to receive are already included into our package. So that's, there's no impact there for us in terms of deciding on this budget. But we thought we put a little box there to let you know that it's really incorporated and it's been considered. Next slide. Nate?
So the, you can see on this slide, the combination of the growth in our general fund costs, just based on the budget assumptions that we talked about earlier, as well as the increased debt service that Yao just mentioned. And as a reminder, the costs associated with the high school project don't really kick in in earnest in this first year. So while there is some additional debt service associated with some borrowing for that program, it's relatively small change compared to what we will see once we actually really get fully loaded with that project. But nevertheless, there's an impact, as you can see, kind of on baseline growth, and then we reflect the potential new investments there and what it would look like if we were to make all of those new investments. And on the next slide, we provide a little bit of budget history here. You can see increases in our total budget, our general fund budget, and then the impact on the equalized tax rate and the actual tax rate. As a reminder to the council, the difference between those two numbers, the equalized tax rate and the actual tax rate, is the impact of the CLA or Common Level of Appraisal. So the equalized tax rate is essentially a good way to compare Burlington to our neighbors. It's before the local CLA impact for anyone, and then when you see the CLA impact on top of it, that is unique to each individual community. So again, it makes it harder to compare what taxpayers see in their actual tax bill because of the CLA, but if you want to compare, it's better to use that equalized rate before the CLA so that you can see the impacts of relative spending decisions. And in Burlington's case, as I think the council is aware, we have had a CLA that has been decreasing routinely over the past few years, and when that happens, it puts upward pressure on the actual tax rate, which is why you see the actual tax rates being significantly higher there than the change in the equalized tax rate. On the next slide, we list the key variables that go into determining tax rates under Vermont's education finance law. The two in green are pieces of information that we have from the state. The Homestead Dollar Yield, which increased by a pretty healthy margin this year. That puts downward pressure on the tax rate, so that's a good news story, so to speak. And then the Common Level of Appraisal, which decreased, and that puts upward pressure on the tax rate. Just to put that change in context, while it's not trivial, it's actually a little bit less than the average we've had over the past three years, which was more on the order of about 2.5% decline per year. So in order to put the various choices about how much we spend in context, we needed to make a few assumptions about tax rate. We wanted to be clear about what those assumptions are, but also to be clear that as we get the final numbers, equalized pupils from the state, for example, that will change the projected tax rate impacts that we see in future slides. However, we felt like it was necessary to, you know, kind of at least illustrate what the tax impact would be with a reasonable assumption, such as no change in our equalized pupil count, just so that people could, again, get a flavor of what the tax impacts would be. And on the next slide, there's a series of scenarios. So as you can see, we list what the growth in the budget would be in the general fund and the total budget based on a series of possible scenarios. And by scenarios, I mean picking a certain dollar amount of those new investments that we just walked through. And you can see from no new investments, just the baseline growth, up to doing all of those new investments, you can see what the growth would be in the budget. And on the next slide, you can see the hypothetical tax impacts here. And these numbers are changed slightly from the slides that you would have reviewed earlier. As we continue to refine the numbers, we increased our baseline growth by about $200,000. So it does have, you know, make the numbers a little higher than what you previously viewed. That's still, you know, kind of work that we're doing, but nevertheless, this gives you at least, using that assumption I talked about, holding the equalized pupils constant, this gives you a sense of what the actual tax rate increase would be at various investment So the next step is the board is meeting tomorrow night to have further discussions on the budget. The administrative staff is preparing a proposal, or at least a scenario, that envisions or that seeks to achieve a 4% tax rate increase. That's based on conversations that the school board had at its previous meeting where they were talking-- were talking about what tax increase kind of they would be comfortable with. And while there wasn't any kind of formal action in this respect, it was just kind of, we took a, kind of the pulse of the, of the group and decided if we came in with something in that 4% range, that would be a good way to narrow the list of, of new investments and still provide the board plenty of flexibility to go up or down from that point. Once again, that number could change once we get our final equalized pupil number, but given what we know today, we are working on a scenario that would, that would reflect a 4% increase.
Okay, so with that, we'd entertain some questions, and any comments you'd like us to retain back for the board?
All right. Great. Thank you for that presentation. We'll open up to the council for questions. Start with Councilor Busher.
Thank you. Thank you. I looked at the old slides and was trying to kind of make changes here, but I did have some, excuse me, I do have a couple of questions and one comment. The comment is that I'm certainly hoping that alternatives to suspensions and displacement programs will remain in your budget. I, I hear, I've heard from all of you just how disruptive that is to family life if you have a child suspended and you have no one to watch them and all of the scenarios. So I assume that, that this program is for middle school and high school? Is that true?
This is accurate.
Okay, all right. So I just wanted to speak to that. And then I had a couple of questions. When you went through all your inclusive teaching and learning and equitable climate and culture, I, a few things stood out for me, which one had to do with 16 FTE kindergarten paraprofessionals? Wow. So I, so are you starting from square one and you have none, and you're building that up to 16? I mean, that seems like a huge number of people to add.
Good observation. So one of the things that I tried to lay out in the preamble there is that we're looking to make these investments. All these items may not happen in this year, so we may get to 16 maybe in year two or year three. So, because what's, one of the challenges we have, some of the things that we may want to do, there's just not the capacity to even do it in this first year. So that's the result of the analysis in terms of that need for kindergartners, but it certainly may not happen 16 for the first year.
Okay.
We can expand upon that. Are you familiar with the history of the Paris, the kindergarten Paris?
Were those the group that actually got cut? That's what I thought. And then you wanted to reintroduce some of them back. That's what I understood from the history and kind of dusting off the cobweb, sorry, but, okay. It, it still seems like a large number for me, but anyways. Then you, an inclusive teaching and learning, you also have two funds, a special ed contingency fund for $250,000, and you have a reserve to hire staff for emerging needs at $400,000. I'm just highlighting things that I looked at and thought, hmm, I wonder if, if those could be pared down or whatever. And then the last comment I want to make has to do with equitable, equitable climate and culture. 11 FTE special education teachers with behavior management expertise, and then elementary social workers and support, special education support, training for pairs. I know all of this is, is needed to some degree. I would very much like to better understand, once you have your budget, where these, where the staff is going to be placed, where the, and, and I'm hoping that that would be very clear for anybody in the community to understand where the new FTEs would be and how they would serve the community that is looking for their support, so.
Yeah, thank you for that. And good observations. One of the things, I'll make a quick comment on those items. Once again, this presentation is really looking at a multi-year approach, so you most likely won't see in the final analysis 11 special, it'll be, because, to be honest with you, if we were granted all 5 million, we'd have challenges trying to implement all of, all of that, doing all the hiring, doing all that within one year. So, but at least it gives us an analysis in terms of what the system needs, and then we can now be strategic around what we can do, what we can afford, and what's logistically possible the first year, and then look to carry over for, for next year. So you'll see some of these items probably come back next year, and then you will kind of remind and say, hey, we started out, we wanted to do 11, we were able to do some analysis, and we did X amount, and now we're going to add the next grouping or whatever it may be.
And one last question for, for Nathan, because I didn't do it. Normally I add up the totals, but if you were to add up all the totals of all these, like, hopeful proposals, what does that total come to?
That's the five, about 5.4 million, I think we called it 5.37 million. So when we, we did that scenario, that was just reflecting if, if one did all of it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Busher. I would like to note that we have three school commissioners here with us this evening, two from the south end, Commissioner Fisher and Commissioner Wick, and from the north end, Commissioner Mark Barlow. And I do, I would also like to note that Commissioner Barlow is not seeking reelection, so I would just like to thank Commissioner Barlow for your years of service to the school and the city of Burlington. Very much appreciate you doing an extremely difficult job. Councilor Jiang, then Pine, and then Odell.
Wow. Thank you, President. And basically, you, Mr. President, you just said what I wanted to say for Mr. Barlow, really. Thank you for your outstanding service to the New North End and also to the community of Burlington. And my question is basically, if you remember, we had a joint meeting between city councilors and school board members at the, it was during the summer, at the police department. And I think Mira Weinberger did start that meeting with the presentation around the opiate crisis. We know it's real, and you just mentioned a little bit here. And today, coming here, I was just listening to VPR and was hearing Peter Shumlin, the former governor, you know, just talking about this. And one question came to my mind around what are we doing for prevention with our middle school and high schoolers? And here I see an investment of over $300,000 for social and emotional learning, and was just wondering if you have professionals coming to the schools and talking to kids about the opiate crisis and plans or strategies for them to not use it or touch it or be around it? That's my first question, and I think the second question, I will wait for the second round. Could you please talk to that?
Absolutely. Great question. The, we actually have quite, quite a few staff that work, and many of them are subsidized through grants, so you don't see them here, so we get external grants. We have, I think there, we have, forget the title, drug and alcohol counselors at the high school and middle school, and they do trainings and supports with our staff and with our students. There is something in there for SLPs that will support that initiative as well, too. So we're quite aware, and so when we talked about the social-emotional, we're talking about the whole package, and so, I mean, our staff are aware of the issues that come into the schools, and so we haven't neglected that, but a good portion of that is through grants as well, but we do have staff that are, we're, they're not here because we already have them, and we're going to continue to support them with them. We look forward to any opportunities with the city to partner in terms of particular that, that issue, because it's not just a school issue, it's, it's a community issue as well.
And I would give a shout out to our Burlington Partnership for Healthy Community, Maria Sanderson, her team as well. But yes, we have acknowledged that with the request of, at the middle school, we find that that age as well, the, putting in for a health teacher, a full-time health teacher. Right now, both middle schools, there was a reduction of a health teacher to half-time, so we see the need there as long, as well as guidance counselors. Two years ago, we had to reduce both middle schools to one guidance counselor each, serving 450 students at both schools, and one health teacher working part-time at both middle schools. And we see the negative impact on that, and that's why we're putting that back in the budget, hopefully.
Thank you, Councilor Jiang. Councilor Pine, and then Councilor Odell.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just, if perhaps you could enter this first question, which is, is the process still that the city council approves putting a question on the ballot that's no longer the process? So this is just for information, really?
Yes. This is a required budget presentation that we get every year from the school. That, that is still required. We have not for quite a few years had any authority anymore to whether the budget goes on the ballot or not. That ended sometime around when Act 68, Act 68.
Thank you. So my questions are, since the contract negotiation process is over, that's a given, that's a fixed, that's a number in this budget, correct? Why was there?
No, well, yes and no. I'll let Nate elaborate a little bit. We have eight units. So when people talk about the contracts, they're usually talking about just the teachers, but we have others we also have to account for. And I'll let Nate talk about the machinations in terms of trying to predict and prepare for, for that going forward as well.
Right, yeah. So in brief, we've reached the tentative agreement with our teachers' union, so the results of that tentative agreement are incorporated into these budget estimates. For all of the other units that we don't have an agreement for, we have made an educated guess about where those settlements will come in.
And what's the, what's the wage increase for the teachers that negotiate?
That hasn't been, that hasn't been public yet, and it's not going to be until the ratification process is complete.
Oh, so the BEA hasn't ratified that?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
They're scheduled to ratify it this week.
Oh, this week? Okay, great. The, so when you're putting this set of assumptions together, you all know what the number is, you know what you're working with. What I'd like to know is if you're shooting for around a 4% tax increase as the, as the goal, if everything goes forward with what you know about the salary increase and the fringe and the benefits, what is going to be the portion of that increase that goes to salary and benefits?
I don't know. I haven't tried to figure out what percentage of that increase. I think it's important to note that the tax increase is somewhat decoupled from the spending increase because of some of the other variables. So it's not as simple as saying a 4% spending increase equals a 4% tax increase, just to make, make that part clear. So I haven't tried to calculate what percentage of a hypothetical tax increase would be attributable to the wage settlements.
We do have, I'm trying, I don't want to guesstimate in public the, there's a, we do have online the percentage of our budget that's dedicated to salaries that you can determine. And normally, your organizations, you know, our size and school districts, it's around the 70% of, of our budget goes to actually humans.
Okay. So then you're going to have a fairly constrained number to be working with because you're soon going to have a contract or at least a ratified contract, and that will drive what you have remaining available to spend on these other, this long list of items, correct?
Yeah, I mean, again, to, to be clear, so we incorporated our assumptions about the collective bargaining settlements into our baseline growth. And so the hypothetical 4% scenario that we're working on, again, that's just a scenario that hasn't been blessed by the school board or anything, but that would include any, and all of the wage settlements based on, you know, the projections we're making. So obviously, if things came in significantly higher than we're projecting, we would have to find offsetting reductions in order to achieve that, because we fully expect to have, have a, certainly the school board will have acted and finalized a budget proposal that will be going on the ballot before those other settlements are complete. So we're going to have to live within our means once the school board kind of makes a determination of, of what that total budget figure is.
As I do every year.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's typical.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's it.
Thank you, Councilor Pine. Councilor Odell.
Thank you, President Wright. I thought it was very interesting and important that the homestead dollar yield is increasing by almost 4.4%, which is historically a large increase. And if I'm not wrong, it's because of some savings in statewide spending associated with consolidation, and was the hopeful result of Act 46?
That is probably true to some degree, although I think it's fair to say that the most significant driver outside of just strong growth in property values is a change in state law that eliminated the general fund transfer for the education fund and replaced it with sales and use tax revenue. And on the heels of that legislative change, the Supreme Court made a rule, the Supreme Court of the United States made a ruling that expanded our ability to collect internet sales tax. So the, the revenue source that is the sales and use tax, at a convenient time for the education fund, has experienced a significant increase in projected revenue. So the change was made, it was supposed to be roughly equal, in terms of legislatively in Vermont, the Supreme Court acts makes that a, a better source of revenue, and that's driving a projected increase in the yield. There's been some discussion at the state level, I know during the campaign, Governor Scott floated a concept that would involve diverting some of that additional revenue growth from the kind of K-12 education system toward other early learning initiatives. So irrespective of whether or not you feel like that's a prudent thing to do, we can at least, should all be able to understand that the, the mechanics of the way the education fund works means that that, a decision would have the impact of decreasing the, the amount of money that's available to support the public education system, and thereby would have a, the impact of increasing the property tax rate statewide. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. So I, I just, I think that you are doing this, but I hope that as you're making the long-term plan and you're thinking about, you know, what you think is an affordable rate of increase in the projected tax rate, that you're factoring in the impact of the $70 million of, of debt service that will start hitting people at some point associated with the high school. And I'm sure you are doing that, but I just, you know, we, it looks like you've identified a lot of good investments. It's good to understand that these are multi-year, they look like big numbers for, you know, without that context. But, you know, when the, the tax base for education spending increases and you have savings due to consolidation, we hope to share some of that with our residents in the form of lower tax rates or lower increases in tax rates.
Yeah, good, good point. And I think we've had the conversation on a macro level and a micro level in terms of from the state, in terms of this could be a one-year blip, and eventually we're going to have to, but also, I think we've done a pretty good job consistently in the last few years in terms of occurring surpluses, and how do we give that back to our taxpayers? And so the board has had that conversation in terms of what do we do with that? And I believe they've, so far, the conversation has been, let's make sure we apply most or all of it to the, the budget process to make sure to reduce the, the, the tax impact to something that they feel that the community would, would accept.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Odell. Any other councillor? Councilor Paul?
Thank you, President Wright. My question was just about the enrollment. You've got, I don't know if it was a blip in, from 18 to 19 in elementary school, it was a fairly significant, I guess, fairly significant drop? Is that something that you've then gone and figured out going forward, come 22, 2021, 2022? I don't know if these elementary school students that are, that represent that decline are ones that are closer to getting to middle school, you know, or if those are people, if that's due to attrition, if that's what that is due to. But do you factor that in going forward in terms of, since some of these proposals that you have are multi-year, do you fa, are you factoring that in, and how do you do that?
Yeah, that's good trending that we have to do, and we've seen the trend over a couple of years, and we've seen the cohort go through the middle school, you can see that growth go into the high school, so we can see the ninth graders are good numbers, and the seventh and eighth graders are healthy numbers. But we also have a healthy pre-K and kindergarten. We added, we added in September another kindergarten class, last minute, showing that there's some new growth coming in, and our trend has been pretty good. I mean, one, I've, I've talked about this a number of times with people in terms of the demographics and enrollment projections in Vermont, it's a decline, but for us here, we've been doing some of this, like we- some of this, like we dip up, dip up, but with a slight move up. So we, so our enrollment is kind of staying steady, will drop a little bit, but go back up. And so we've been able to, Nate showed the slide there, we've had the same staffing level regardless of the increase or decrease in the last three years. We've been able to keep the same staffing level. And this year, we have the same staffing level for these numbers. We can still have the capacity. At the same time, we're adding staffing for, to address interventions and enrichment and pieces like that. So I think we've done a pretty steady job in terms of looking at the trends and being able to follow that. These trends are not, have not been that significant to throw us off, like it's not, you know, like 50 kids all of a sudden came out of nowhere. So they, they're, they're quite manageable and we are thinking of the future in terms of, and that's all part of, if you look at the documentation and analysis of our 10-year capital plan, we've done some of that analysis and thinking about 10 years out, what's it going to look like based on what we have and trying to prepare, be flexible to address our capacity needs as we, as we move forward.
Thank you, Councilor Paul. Any other city councillor with a question for the school team? Hearing none. Thank you very much for that presentation, and we'll be looking for, we'll be hearing more information going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will move forward to item 6.03, a resolution on non-union salary increases and adjustments. Councilor Nodel.
Mayor Wright, I waive the reading.
Would you like to, would you like to rephrase that, Councilor Nodel?
President, President Wright, excuse me.
Sorry, Mayor Weinberger.
I'm a little frightened, you'll, you'll, you'll understand. I move to waive the reading, move adoption, and defer to the administration after a second.
Defer to Mayor Weinberger.
Correct.
And Councilor Busher laughing a little too much on that. Okay. We'll defer to the administration now. Mr. Mayor?
Second.
We need a second. Councilor Paul, seconds. She confused me on that one, too. Sorry.
So, um, the item before you is essentially, we've reached, as the council's aware, the public is aware, in a sub, we have completed collective bargaining with two of our four bargaining units, a third one maybe completed tonight, depending on subsequent agenda item. And typically, we have more or less, we have waited to make commitments to our non-union employees about their annual cost of living adjustments and other compensation items such as how much, how many, how great the contributions are to healthcare and retirement costs, until we have gotten basically to this stage of the development process and in particular, the, completed the AFSMI collective bargaining contract. We have gotten to that point, we have approved a contract for the next four years, including the year we're in, for AFSMI and IBW, hopefully BPOA after a night. We think it, basically, in, you know, in part, building off of those agreements, we have a proposal before you for, that would put into effect, once ratified and then implemented, the changes to non-union compensation for FY 19, the year that we're halfway through. This is quite consistent, I think, with how we've handled this kind of change in the past.
Thank you, Mayor Weinberger. Questions for the mayor of the administration? Hearing none? We are ready for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 6.04 is a resolution from Councilor Shannon. Councilor Shannon?
I move to waive the reading and adopt the resolution and ask for the floor back after a second.
Seconded by Councilor Roof. Councilor Shannon, you have the floor back.
Thank you, President Wright. I think the resolution lays out pretty well the, the issue of plastics in our environment, and I think that we are also all pretty aware of, of this impact as we daily buy things in plastic, crumple it up, throw it away, recycle what we can. It's not all recyclable. What is recyclable still ends up either in our waste stream or in our streams. And those streams eventually lead to the ocean, which is internationally recognized as a major problem at this point. I think that it's interesting, some of the, some of the facts that are shared in this resolution about what other countries are doing, other countries that don't have necessarily, maybe as good trash collection or as good recycling efforts, but they see it. We hide it. I think we pretend this issue doesn't exist at times, but it does. And the fact that Kenya is now, has a fine of $40,000 for anybody using, producing, or selling a plastic bag is startling. I don't think we're going to be Kenya. I want to say that, that's not where we're going. But it does demonstrate the seriousness of this problem internationally, and I think that we need to start addressing this as a community. There are many elements of the plastics problem that we can't address at the local issue, but there are some that we can, and I think we ought to do what we can. And as a first step in this process, I would like to have the, the voters weigh in on this. I want, I think that it's important as we go forward with initiatives as a council, that we have the buy-in of the community and that we're able to gauge how important and how much of a priority this is in the community. So that's why we're asking for your support on this, and I really appreciate the collaboration that I've had with Councilor Roof, who we've kind of come at the same issue with maybe different pet peeves, but I think that what we're really talking about here is a, a more, a more global look at single-use plastics and starting a process of trying to, to improve our habits and our practices as a community.
Thank you, Councilor Shannon. Councilor Roof?
So, pet peeves, I like that. So I came, I've been working on, as some of you know, with a group of about a dozen or so restaurants and bars and club owners in the city around the issue of plastic straws, plastic cups, plastic stirs, things like that. I was planning on bringing something in the spring, wouldn't necessarily be a ban, but some sort of policy around mitigation or, or putting, trying to reduce the use in that, in that environment. I thought this is a good opportunity to, to add the, the straw conversation to the global conversation around plastics. I'm hoping for a good turnout in March, and I think they'll, we'll see some, some movement from me and some others and folks in the community around how we can reduce use of straws in our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Roof. Other city councillors? Councilor Pine?
Yeah, just, I thought it was worth noting and important to point out that back about 10 years ago, a student at the Sustainability Academy by the name of Milo Kress led a campaign in Burlington, which went national and international to ban plastic straws. So it started at the Sustainability Academy, and he's largely credited with the movement. If you go on the internet and type in Milo Kress, you'll find this kid who started at age nine, working to, to ban plastic straws. So as he said when he was nine, the kid's quite precocious, he said, "The straw has finally broke the camel's back. Let's get rid of it."
I remember him testifying when I served on the Natural Resources Committee. Brilliant kid. Any other city councillor? Councilor Jiang?
So I have a couple of questions, and I think the first one would be to Council Mason. Yes?
Well, we, we're, lay out whatever questions you have and then I'll direct the questions. I don't, we, we don't go back and forth, so just lay out your questions, then I'll recognize Council Mason.
Thank you. So I was just asking about a reminder, I think we did have a ballot item last March, and it was to increase this age in possessing cigarettes, right? And I, I just need a reminder about what was the type of ballot item? Was it for the council? Was it for the state of Vermont or, yeah?
Do you have other questions or is that the main?
Yes, and I do have other questions.
For Council Mason or other questions?
No.
Okay. Council Mason, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, that one's easy. I believe Councilor Jiang is referring to, it was an advisory question about whether we should encourage the state legislature to increase the age, and that did pass, we made, that we passed that along to the state, which did not act in accordance with our wishes, at least during that last session.
And you, you might talk to some of your state senators on that one?
Yes.
Those are the ones blocking it.
So, I mean, I think, but I do think that this is very important, and I do think that Burlingtonians in general, they will definitely support this in general, because it, this is Burlington and we care about the environment and we care about, you know, nature. We care about a lot of things. But me, I mean, I don't know the purpose of putting this on the ballot, just by the fact that we haven't done the real work. And real work meaning like this council could have created a working group that will look into all the ramifications around any of this. Like, should we ban plastic? Should we ban straw? And they will be able to do the research about what really fits here. And if we come across an issue where it's a little bit, you know, between the council, where it's a little bit problematic, I think it would be important then for us to bring that item to, to a ballot. But if we bring this to the ballot and we vote yes, what does it really mean? What does it, where is it going to get us? Is it when the process of doing the research will start? I am just kind of a little bit wanting to know about the process. What will come next from here? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jiang. Those are rhetorical questions that I will recognize as sponsor of the resolution to address. Councilor Shannon?
Thank you. I, I don't consider them rhetorical questions.
Well, rhetorical in a sense that, go ahead.
I would like Councilor Jiang to know that I did actually organize an informal group of councillors that met many times several years ago, and Councilor Paul participated, Councilor Hartnett participated. We had meetings with different stakeholders that would be affected, we met with CSWD, and out of that process, we weren't really able to shake loose any action forward. And that is, so, so I feel like I have done exactly what you suggested, and because that process did not go so well, that is why I'm bringing this forward, because I think that a public vote will help us move forward. So that's, that's all I'll say on that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Shannon.
Oh, there, if I could just add one thing. Through that process, we did learn that the large, the large grocery stores have no problem with, with plastic bag bans because they have dealt with it. But the people who were very resistant to this are the small mom and pop shops who feel that their constituents want these bags. And so that is also one of the reasons why this is important, is that, you know, I think that we need the constituents to tell the, you know, not just the council, but the store owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Shannon. Councilor Roof?
President Wright, to Councilor Jiang's point about what comes next, as a co-sponsor on this, my, my idea, my thought, my understanding is that with affirmation from the voters, this would go to either a working group or the ordinance committee to do additional work, to look at how we can create a pause, or a new ordinance section in the city's ordinances around reducing single-use plastic, not just looking at bags, but plastic straws and maybe others as well. So I think there's still a lot of process, public process to happen if this vote goes forward and passes.
Thank you, Councilor Roof. Does that satisfy your questions, Councilor Jiang?
Bit of it.
Great. Thank you. Any other councillor on this resolution? Hearing none? We are ready for a vote. All those in favor of moving this forward to the ballot, please say aye.
Aye.
Passing the resolution. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, and we will move on to item 5.05, and this is a resolution regarding ratification of the tentative agreement and authorization with the police department. We will recognize, Councilor Paul.
Thank you, thank you, President Wright. I'd like to waive the reading, move to adopt the resolution, ask for a second, and after a second, if there are any councillors who have any questions, would refer them, those questions to the council president and, whoops, and then the city attorney.
Thank you, Councilor Paul. Seconded by, seconded by Councilor Shannon. And I will, we, I know that it's up to the council whether we go into executive session, and I think there is a desire to go into executive session, so I will recognize, Council Pine.
Yeah, I know impromptu executive sessions are not encouraged, and I don't take it lightly that we would, but based on the testimony during public forum about the concern that the contract impacts or limits the city's disciplinary options, perhaps, just that question, I think, I just, I think the council needs to benefit from a discussion with our attorney on that. So I would move to find that the, that the council should discuss the contract negotiations, premature disclosure of which would place the city at a disadvantage.
Seconded by Councilor Busher, I heard first. So we have a motion on the findings from Councilor Pine, seconded by Councilor Busher. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have the finding, and Council Pine?
Now I would like to move to go into executive session to discuss
Base.
Contract negotiations.
Based on the, based on the findings.
Based on the findings, thank you.
Thank you. And just, just, I mean, we did know that there was a possibility that, you know, if councillors wanted to go into executive session after the Board of Finance, that we, that would be out there. So, no problem at all. So we have a motion on the table that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? City Attorney Blackwood, did you have any? All those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will, and of course, June 17, we will, we will be coming back. All right? We are back, and we have on the floor, motion, ratification of the contract. City Attorney Blackwood, would you like to make any? City councillor?
Yes, I've been asked to respond to, to some questions that were raised by Citizen Comment earlier, and they had to do with civilian oversight of the police department and whether, and the relationship to the union contract. And one thing I think I can say is that the existing provisions in the contract relating to the, to union discipline were not a subject of the bargaining this go-round and are not substantively changed from what they were in the contract that is, has currently been enforced.
Thank you, City Attorney Blackwood. Other questions or comments by the city council? Hearing none? Hearing none? Councilor Nodel?
Sorry, President Wright. I just thought a, a report from the Board of Finance might be helpful.
Um...
Which I'm prepared to offer.
Okay. There you go. I was going to say, who do I know that's on the Board of Finance? Councilor Nodel?
So this does come to the council with the unanimous recommendation of the Board of Finance. We did not have the opportunity to discuss this latter issue, but we, we understand, we have a, a sense that this, this obviously will lead to an increase in spending, you know, in the police department. It is important that we do this in order to retain great officers that we're currently recruiting, training, and then losing to other forces. And I personally think that having an outstanding police department is an essential part of the quality of life in Burlington. And we, we should not be compromising on that in, in any respect. We are still putting together a plan. We had a great presentation from the administration with kind of the forecast of the next two fiscal years, and I'm prepared to support this, but we will, we do need to understand that we'll need to find a way to integrate it into our overall budgets for the upcoming years. But it does have the unanimous support of the Board of Finance, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Nodel, and I know the chief did give us specific examples of losing officers to other communities, et cetera. Other councillors? I think, Councilor Hartnett?
I appreciate the fact that...
I appreciate the fact that we're gonna have to find some way to cut here going forward. We can't keep going to the taxpayers of Burlington and having open up their wallets time after time again. And I agree with the police that it's essential. But we're gonna have to look at our own budgets within the city. And because it is getting very expensive to live here. And we heard from the schools tonight, right? And so I take it that we're gonna be going to the voters for a tax increase, general obligation, tax increase in March. I mean, how much can we ask from these guys? Right? And given some of the services that they do get, other than police and fire, I think we're really putting ourselves out there. I think, you know, with the increases that we have seen, you know, they've taken a hit on with the schools, and now this. And I got a feeling there's others coming. And we're gonna go to March and say, "We need it now." I don't know. You know, I just think that we gotta be very careful about how much we can expect these people to fork over, time after time after time. And so I caution, and I ask the administration going forward, you know, putting things on the bout, asking people, you know, to increase their taxes. I think we really need to look at ourselves, look at where we can cut. I don't think we've done a good job overall, throughout our city departments, of looking about where we could come up with some possible cuts. I really don't. And I think we need to start doing that. I really do.
Thank you, Counselor Hartnett. Counselor Nodel?
President Wright, it was not my intention to have, launch a budget discussion. But I think that, rest assured that the Board of Finance is fully cognizant of such concerns. And we're, and so is the mayor. And we are taking this account and are planning. I just wanted to add that I think that as we, I hope we do ratify this tonight. And I hope that the great members of the police force, who are covered by this contract, will participate in this conversation that the commission is having about citizen complaint process. And help us create a strong and robust process that will help the police, will help the citizens, and that will take our support of this contract tonight as our good-faith gesture. And that it will be, that we'll get some nice, good cooperation. We don't know that we don't, we're not. But we're just not done with that process yet.
Thank you, Counselor Nodel. With that, I think we should not be ready for a vote. Counselor, Mayor Weinberger?
Yeah, President Wright, I just, you know, look forward to the upcoming budget process with the council. And I think we will likely have further discussions about the budget with the council in the month of January. Because it is something being considered, putting what would be just the second in eight budget years that I've been responsible for. We have had only one time prior till now, a proposed increase in property taxes to deal with operating costs. I do make a distinction between operating costs and capital costs, which have a very high threshold. And we need a supermajority of voters in order to make changes there. And there, the increases, I think, have been modest as well. But operating costs, we've been very focused on. And I don't agree with the notion that department heads and departments have not worked extremely hard to cut hundreds of thousands of dollars of budget items, which is one of the things we reviewed in the meeting earlier tonight. So should further cuts be on the table? Absolutely. And that's what we talked about at the Board of Finance tonight. But I don't think it's a fair characterization of the work done by this administration, by department heads, that have not been mindful. It is, our most, if we didn't work hard, we would have had increases year after year. Because our revenues do not keep up with the rise of inflation. Certainly, property tax revenues do not keep pace with inflation, and our expenses do go up. So the fact that this would be only the second time in eight years we would be coming to voters, potentially, if this is something we collectively decide to do, I think is a sign that that work has happened and will continue to happen.
Thank you, Mayor Weinberger. Other councillors? Counselor Jiang?
Thank you, President. So I think I am in a position right now that's very, I don't know. I don't even know how I really feel. Because there is a contract in front of me, and I don't really have all the information. And I think it is about time for us to think about when doing these type of bargainings with any association or people, we need to have members of this council to be there in order to speak for us. Because most of the time, there are memos coming in front of us, and it's too late for us to change our mind. And at the same time, we wanna make the right decision. We are not full-time councillors. But I think any moving forward, it would be imperative to have members of this council to be on those bargainings. And I don't know who is there, right? But at the same time, I hear where Counselor Hartnett is coming from, right? Burlington is getting more and more expensive. And we, at the same time, appreciate the hard work of the men and women of the police department. And now we are going to ratify the contracts that did not include items that are really important, in my own sense. So I will be voting yes for this. But I would want us to think about moving forward. How can we have a better process in ratifying these type of contracts? That's all I wanted to say, and thank you. And I'm gonna vote for yes, but my mind is not really into it. And I don't wanna be also the black sheep. Everybody vote yes, and I vote no. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jiang. Although certainly, any councillor should always feel free to vote the way their conscience tells them at all times. With that, we will go to a vote. All those in favor of ratifying the contract with the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. And we will move on now to item number seven, which is committee reports. Any committee chair that would like to speak? Counselor Tracy?
Thank you, President Wright. The Transportation, Energy, Utilities Committee will be meeting tomorrow at Pine Street at 5:30 to discuss an intersection scoping study with recommendations for Colchester, Riverside, Barrett, and Mill Street, that intersection. We also have the CCRPC, or Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission's Unified Planning Work Program projects. And then there's also an agenda item on there for pedestrian safety efforts as well.
Thank you, Counselor Tracy. Other committee chairs? Counselor Nodel?
President Wright, the Senior Center Study Committee will meet on Wednesday, September 16, at the Old North End Community Center, starting at 10:30. And we are, again, you'll recall that we are working to stabilize the future of the Heineberg Senior Center, to make sure we don't lose that very important senior center. And also thinking about what we can do to enhance senior centers citywide in a cost-effective way.
Thank you, Counselor Nodel. Counselor, any other councillor on committee reports? I just wanted, for the record, I just offered Counselor Shannon to be in a picture with her, and she has declined.
Officially.
And she can use that in her campaign any way she wants. Any other committee chair? And anybody else can, too, if it works for you. So I know I'm a topic in some of these debates. Okay, let's move on. City councillors on general city affairs? Any councillor on general city affairs? Hearing none? We will move on to city council president. I really don't have any report. I think everybody has returned in their sheet to Lori in the clerk's office. And hopefully, we'll be able to come up with a time right away for the implicit bias training. And we are also looking, expecting to have Brookfield here, I hope, January 22nd, working with the administration on that. With that, I will turn it over to the mayor for item number 10. Bring us home, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, President Wright. I just wanted to wish the public, wish colleagues, Happy New Year, first meeting of 2019. And I think we got the year started right on New Year's Eve with the launch of the first-ever highlight. I want to say thank you to the Burlington City Arts team and their many partners that worked so hard to successfully take on the significant responsibility of living up to the community's desire to come together on New Year's Eve and celebrate it properly. I thought that, for a first edition of this event, it went very well. Many of the new venues that were rolled out this year, I think, were big successes. The Old North End Community Center, the Soda Plant in the South End and the Waterfront were venues that I went to with my family. And I thought each of them worked very well and were a really great addition to the event. We, I think Burlingtonians and our neighbors showed that this is an event that they value. We had something in excess of 6,000 tickets purchased, or in some cases, given away for the event, which compares well to the totals at the fortunate events in recent years. So I think it's an indication the public wants us to find a way, despite certainly some budgetary pressures. We did put more into this event financially than we have in previous years. But I think the public enjoyed it. And what I've heard is that people want to see it continue. So I look forward to talking to the council about that and seeing if you've heard otherwise or have different thoughts. But again, congratulations and thank you to the team that worked very hard on this and helped the community get the year started right. And I think I'll leave it at that, President Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with that, look for a motion at 9:25 to adjourn. Counselor Nodel, seconded by Counselor Roof. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.